Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. And I must apologize for the lateness of our meeting this evening. We had a lot of issues to discuss at caucus, and also we had an executive session that dealt with legal issues pertaining to the city of Harrisburg. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott, present. Ms. Bowers, Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you. Ms. Bowers is not able to be with us tonight, and so she is excused, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Madsen.
Yes, please. If we could send thoughts and prayers to the migrant children who are currently residing in the Border Patrol Station in Clint, Texas. I don't know if anybody followed that news, but the conditions of the migrant children in Texas is deplorable at best, and I'd like us as a community in Harrisburg to send our thoughts and prayers to those children. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to communications, tonight we have updates from Department of Parks and Recreation regarding the summer program and activities. I will now turn it over to Ms. Daniels, who is the Chair of Parks and Recreation. Ms. Daniels?
Thank you. So, we have two representatives from the Department of Parks and Rec. If you guys could introduce yourselves and tell us and let the residents of Harrisburg know more about the programs that we have for the young Harrisburg residents for the summer.
All right. My name is David Baker. I'm Parks and Facilities Director for the city of Harrisburg. I want to thank you guys for having us tonight. Kevin Sanders will be doing the majority of the presentation, and we will both be here to answer any questions you might have afterwards.
Hello. Kevin Sanders, Parks and Recreation. All right. An update, our locations we've chosen for 2019 are Reservoir Park, Cloverly Heights, Fourth and Emerald, Sunshine Park, also known as Morrison, Wilson Park, Seventh and Radnor slash Gorgous Playground. Our program is offered Monday through Friday, 10 to 3. Fridays are fill trip, so the start time is based off of the fill trip. The starting date was just June 10th. We go all the way to August 9th. The August 9th tentative, depending on how our numbers go the last two weeks. The age is, we focus on 6 to 15. Generally, most of the kids that sign up are 6 to 13, but we do have programming for older kids. The fees are free to the city residents. Participants must sign up and follow program guidelines to be eligible for all activities. Programs in general, we do group activities, leisure play, arts and crafts, field games, free time, nature walks, kickball, wiffle ball, rundown, basketball, soccer, yoga, music, and other fun activities. We try to do some educational activities based on the leaders at the sites. It does vary in that realm. The fill trips in general are, so these are a couple of the fill trips we go to. We go to Round Top, Freshy Mountain. We went to, this year we went to the Craylon Experience, Creole Experience, excuse me. It covered a little bit more of art, artistic interaction. It was a little different than what we have in the past. It was more of a focus on kids of probably five years old to 12 years old. We saw some positives by going there thus far. We also plan to go to Aussies Fund Fest. We also went to Urban Trapaline already. Guppy Gulch is a new one. It's an outdoor water activity. We've gone to Carlos's Sports Forum in the past. We also have a final trip, which we TBD staff will most likely pick that trip. On Wednesdays, we have free pool for the program participants.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, at Parks and Rec, we're trying to use the field trips basically as a reward for the kids whenever they show up consecutively and they behave and they hopefully have a great time every day. We show them that we're going to work towards this as a goal. You know, you guys come here, you do these programs, you know, you follow the rules and all this kind of stuff, and you know, you're not running around the streets, you're not doing anything you're not supposed to. We're trying to reward them with, you know, all-around fun and as best we can do, educational field trips. You know, we do have, we do have, you know, some guidelines that we can go over with people on, you know, what they're going to have criteria they'll have to meet to be able to hit these trips. But it's, you know, for the most part, that's why a lot of these field trips you're seeing are, you know, they're really supposed to be as fun as possible for the kids. We also have some possibilities of different guest speakers coming in to speak with the kids. You know, some of this stuff, we spoke with some urban agricultural individuals where they have local farms, they have beekeeping setups there where the bees pollinate their farms, and they would absolutely love to show the kids how that entire process works and explain to them, you know, from start to finish, how the food's grown and what you can do in the city and all different aspects of that situation. I know with certain council members, we've been speaking about possibly getting in financial people to explain to the kids on how to, you know, how that whole situation works and kind of go into a little bit of depth on, you know, just education in that area because some of these kids might know amazing amounts about this, some might know nothing at all. We're hoping to kind of round their education in different ways they might not see in school quite as much. Go ahead.
We also have evening program at Reservoir Park in Fourth and Emerald, Monday through Thursday at Reservoir, Monday through Friday at Emerald. Evening hours generally go into the evening, close to 10, but a little bit scaled back around 9, 9:30. It just depends on attendance. Fourth and Emerald goes a little later than Reservoir because they have more lighting. City pools are Jackson Lake Swimming Pool at Sixth Encounter, and Penn National Pool and Playground is at 1413 South 18th Street. The days of operation are Tuesday through Sunday. Time is 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Adults are four, children three to 17, and seniors are $2. We also will be offering a free learn to swim program in July at Penn National, 7:16 through 7:19, and 7:23 through 7:26 will be at Penn National, which is also Hall Manor. And then Jackson Lake will be 7:30 through 8:2, and then 8:6 through 8:9 will be at Jackson Lake. If they complete the whole program, they'll get a certification form. We also this year have a tennis program down at Morrison Park, Monday through Thursdays, 4:00 PM through 8:00, 8:00 PM. Ages eight to 12 is 4:00 to 5:30 PM, and then ages 13 and 17 are 6:00 to 7:30 PM.
One last note on my part is we want parents of the children to know that there is no set date for signup. You can sign up online, you can come in in person. If you would like to, we would love it if you pre-scheduled, you know, your signup and let us know who's going to be where at what time. But if you don't have that ability and you just want to bring a kid that day, you can bring your children, and, you know, we do our best to not turn anyone down. Obviously, you know, we can't go past a maximum amount of kids, so we have a safe number. But as far as I know, we haven't turned anybody down yet, so, you know, feel free as parents to bring your kids down anytime to these programs.
What do parents need, what information do parents need to bring with their application?
Well, generally, when they sign up, we kind of go over the expectations with all the parent and the child. Whether they come to the mansion, they'll definitely get the expectation at the site. They're supposed to get the expectations.
Okay. But they don't need to bring any document, any kind of documents, any school record, group of residence?
No. No. We're trusting.
Yeah, we don't require immunization records or anything like that, or ages, or identification.
There's some pieces on the form if there's an issue for them to fill out, and we'll note that if they're eating allergy or if they have a health issue.
Emergency contact info.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Sounds like you guys have some exciting things going on this summer. I'm going to look forward to seeing all the kids participate in it. I live diagonally across from a playground, and it's been a lot of kids over there over the past couple of weeks since schools let out, and I've seen them, it looked like go on a field trip already. So, I'm just glad to see that something the kids need in our community, so.
Yeah, same. I'm glad to see there's some activities for the kids over the summer, and no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. Have we implemented the program where we're going to allow the kids to swim free on Wednesdays? Are we doing that program again this year? Have you looked at doing that program?
Yes.
Okay. And how much would that mean? When does that start?
So, we're doing the kids in the program.
Can you tell the public, the particulars about that so they know?
Yes. If your child has signed up for the program, they get to go to the pool for free on Wednesdays.
Okay.
So, as long as we have kids in the camps in the summer programs, that's our stipulation. So, again, we're trying to get these kids to come and to stay in these programs and give them something they look forward to that, you know, other people that aren't in the programs don't get. So, if you do come to the programs and you do participate, then, you know, we do give the free Wednesday swim to all the kids in the programs.
What's the maximum of kids per playground that you have?
Right now, Morrison is up to about 83. Reservoir is trailing, they will pass.
Okay. Okay. And both pools are open?
Yes.
Okay. And how many lifeguard? How many lifeguards you have per pool?
This year, we're up to a good solid 15. There's a couple more that could come on or may not come on.
Okay. And those who's doing the swimming lessons, they're certified?
Yes.
Okay.
They did really well this year.
Pardon me?
We did a lot better this year with staff.
Are you recruiting the lifeguards?
With younger staff, yes.
Utilizing individuals who are students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Very well, thank you. I'm glad both pools are open, so we don't have the fighting at the pools this year. So, how many people do you have working at each pool besides the lifeguards? How many attendants?
Each pool has two managers.
Okay.
Plus some senior staff, not senior staff, senior lifeguards are working there.
So, you're looking at about four or five people per pool?
No, we have a little bit more at each pool. I'm not going to say we have 20 active, but we did have some people who are still in the paperwork that were lifeguards previously, but I don't know where they're really at.
So, did you do any renovations to the pool at the Sixth Street Pool in the locker room?
Yeah, so both locker rooms, we actually spent, we spent some money in each locker room over the winter time to get all the facilities up to par to, you know, a minimum standard. I mean, obviously, we would love to really make everything nice out there, but we made sure it was safe this year. We made sure everything was where it had to be for the kids as, you know, a standard where the toilets are all working. We were working on ADA accessibility out there so we can better equip, you know, anyone in a wheelchair. We've removed a few toilets so we can widen some of the stalls. Every single fixture we have out there is working perfectly. We put some new stuff in, and, you know, just little things like door latches and showerheads and, you know, little stuff like that we've added to it just to try and make it more comfortable for people using it.
Certainly, that's what I wanted to know because in visiting some of the locations, the two locations, I know that we weren't ADA accessible, nor do we have the facilities for the toilets that are lowered for the little kids. So, that's one of the things that I really want to stress, that you lower the toilets so that, you know, the young kids can utilize those.
I know what you mean now. I got you, yeah.
Yeah, because they're too high and they have to jump up.
We didn't, that wasn't, we didn't do that.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, we don't have for the younger children, now that's an easy fix, you know, stools or something like that around the actual toilets themselves. We did more ADA, like if you're wheelchair-bound longer, so we widened some of the stalls. We're also implementing an individual, he's a management individual here at the city that he specializes in all different kinds of like deep cleans and, you know, certain, I guess it would be more like a hospital-type setting with keeping everything very sanitary with a lot of individuals using it. He's going out there once a week to not only work on things to make sure everything stays, you know, clean for the kids, but also train the staff on best practices to be used out there, so hopefully we can, you know, keep it looking good for people.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I don't have any questions, David.
All right. So, you mentioned, I think, one of the locations, but how many children do we have signed up across all of the locations?
Roughly, we're just spread out, probably between about 210.
210?
210 to about 220. That's not our final tally, but the first week with the weather, the two really cold days really hurt us, then even the second week. But this week, our numbers will gradually really pick up.
Are you speaking just the pools or the entire program?
Well, I'm talking about the summer enrichment program.
Okay. Entire programs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that number will ebb and flow throughout the year, too?
Right. No, I understand. And you said if a parent isn't signed up already, has their child signed up already, they can go online to the website, or do you have physical copies at the mansion?
Yeah, they can go to the site.
Or any site?
Reservoir Park or to online.
Okay. So, Reservoir Park or online?
Or actual, the actual playground.
So, each individual playground someone would have? Okay. Perfect.
At any time, it's dropping.
Right.
They just might not be able to do that if they come in Thursday, they're not going to be able to do it Friday.
Friday. Understandable. Understandable. So, in terms of our staff at the playgrounds, I know it's been an issue in the past. We've asked the question, and how many of those individuals, those, you know, leader, park leaders are Harrisburg residents?
I didn't break that out.
Okay.
I could get that to you.
Yeah, if you can get that to me, that'd be great.
So, I can't tell you the exact number right now, but I do know that recruiting was very, very heavily done in the city.
Okay. Look forward to getting those numbers, because I don't want to be mindful of time. And then in terms of the pools, I know in the past we've had signups by different, you know, summer camps or daycares. What are the signups looking like this year in terms of our memberships for the pools?
It definitely was slow with the weather, and we were slow because even though we were open, it's been slow this year because of what happened last year at Jackson Lake. So, we actually had a lot of people sign up a little last minute. So, all that's still kind of up and going, too, with the weather.
Okay.
Because last year, Jackson Lake was off almost all the way to August.
All right.
So, there was some fear to sign up.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. I will ask some other questions, because I've had a chance to visit Jackson Lake, and I know some of the concerns have to do with the surface of the pool. I know it, there were, some people were asking, you know, when I was up there, could it be painted or, you know, something like that? Because I know we've been talking about what to do as a city with our pools, and, you know, are we going to look to do splash parks or, you know, make renovations? So, but we can talk more about that offline.
You mean the shallow end?
Yeah, the shallow end, the shallow end of the pool. Yes, I was up there a couple of weeks ago, and, yeah. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
That's it for me, too. No. Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the update.
Thanks.
And thank you, and good luck in doing wonderful things for the citizens of Harrisburg. Mr. Simons, I do have one question, one more question. How do you get that information out to the public, to the parents, that we're going to have free swimming on Wednesdays? How are you getting it? By pamphlet or word of mouth or what are you doing?
So, we've been doing just free for the program, not free the entire day. So, it's free 12 to 3 if you're enrolled in the program.
Just for the individual kids who are signed up for the program?
Yes. And they have to go with us. We take them, too.
Okay.
And the staff, they promote that. Anytime somebody new shows up, they just want to, they probably tell them more about that than anything. A lot of kids really want the pool.
Yeah. So, it's different than what we had before?
Than what we did last year? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to courtesy of the floor at this time, I'll open up the mic to anyone who's on my right. If you'd like to come to the mic, please do so now. To the right. Middle.
I'd like to know how much time you give people on the floor.
Well, I try to be respectful, but, you know, because there's others that want to come to the mic, so how much time do you need?
I'll be quick about it. My name is Thomas Lopke. I live in A13 South Front Street in Harrisburg. I'm the person who sent all of you copies of the short-term rentals issue, and I also gave, tried to be as transparent as possible and gave information to officials of the city government so that they would know what's going on. The objective was to give the big picture of what the short-term rentals system is all about. The one thing I need to clear up is it's a misnomer to refer to short-term rentals as B&Bs. B&Bs is a company, and there are multiple companies. So, when we're talking about, and this is the beginning of what I anticipate to be many discussions that we have in the future, when we talk about these things, we shouldn't refer to them as B&Bs, we should refer to them as short-term rentals. I'll cut some things out here and basically let you know that from what we can ascertain, Harrisburg is a silent city when it comes to either condoning or against short-term rentals. There is no ordinance. A tourist travel research institute did a study, a random study, that had 59 cities, and of those 59 cities, 32 of them already had ordinances on short-term rentals. The other cities in that study all said that they were finishing the final stages of their ordinances on short-term rentals. Some have even gone as far as to say, "We do not want any short-term rentals in our Even when an ordinance is passed, that's no guarantee that short-term rentals are not going to pose a problem in our city. In New York City, which has the most stringent of all ordinances, the Attorney General found out that 75% of all short-term rentals were illegal. Portland, Oregon, who has an ordinance, did a study and found out that 10%, that's it, 10% signed up for permits in order to have short-term rentals. So, 90% were out of compliance. The one that concerns us the most is the commercial short-term rentals. And they can, commercial short-term rentals consist of residents who are not at their homes. And basically, what they do is they work with these companies. People come in and they wheel in their luggage on Friday night, they consider the house their own until Sunday night, and then they're off. But what that does is make the community responsible for all of their behavior that happens during the time that they're here. In order to get an ordinance passed, a city such as Austin, Texas filed 270 complaints against a particular short-term resident. And it wasn't until after 270 complaints were filed, the city council decided that they needed to push to get an ordinance passed to deal with short-term residences. The downside of these, of these money-making propositions is that so many of our homes in Harrisburg have common walls. So, you're the victims of the people that come in every weekend, and they're strangers. If you have children in a neighborhood, that's a real safety concern. Parking is a concern. Fire and safety is a concern. Many others become a concern, and it becomes the burden of the citizens in that neighborhood to deal with those commercial short-term residences. So, any ordinance that is passed by city council should definitely not contain any commercialized short-term rental, because it puts the burden on neighbors, not on the homeowner who's gaining money from having their visitors there. We've seen in our neighborhood that several of our neighbors have moved out because of the STRs, short-term rentals. We've also seen that some of our long-term rental people have had to find other locations within our area because the owner of the property decided to make one of the apartments a short-term rental.
Okay.
So, we feel like we're losing control. From 2012 to 2017, short-term rentals increased by 82%. From now until 2022, they expect another 60% increase in short-term rentals. So, this problem is not going to go away. It's going to get worse. We're looking for, we would prefer not to have to submit 270 complaints to the city before an ordinance is established within Harrisburg. And we are sad that people have moved out of our neighborhood because of these money-making propositions that have moved in.
Okay.
So, just to closer.
Okay.
If you unpack the short-term rental issue, it basically boils down to one of two things. You either prioritize people in the city making money off of residences that they may or may not even be there, or the alternative is, and the agenda that comes across is that if you prevent these kinds of things from happening, it shows that the city's agenda is to foster neighbors. And it's money versus neighbors. That's as basic as it comes down to.
Okay.
And we would like to see city council begin, and I've talked with Ms. Bowers about this.
Yes.
Begin to put an ordinance through as soon as possible and find out the agenda of Harrisburg city government, because the way it stands right now, it's money-focused, it's not neighbor-focused.
Okay, sir. We thank you. And Ms. Bowers is not here tonight, but I certainly will address the issue with her and tell her that you were in attendance and that you would like to see an ordinance being put on the books of the city of Harrisburg. We are going to be going on vacation on the 2nd of July, and we won't return until August 27th. And I assure you during that time, she will probably work on putting an ordinance together to address that issue.
And she's also looking at state tax funds.
Okay.
As well as local tax funds.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle, please?
Less 4, 2033 Bellevue, Harrisburg. I am speaking tonight as the Director of the Heinz Menderkis Senior Center. I came here ready to express concern about a very specific timeline and issue. After listening to the conversation during the caucus, I realized that there is a much larger problem and a much more fundamental risk. The problem that I really wanted to talk about was simply the problem of the cycle that we had last year and where I am this year. Last year... Last year, the city hit its timeline, its targets, for the processing of HUD funds. Even though they hit those timelines and the fiscal year began October 1st, we never got a dime until March. We went six months before we got a dime, as a matter of fact, before we got the authorization, official authorization to pull down a dime of that money. That meant six months of going into debt to maintain fundamental programs that, as the HUD representative from Philadelphia, who was here two weeks ago, said, "Are presumed to be eligible." I believe I heard, and I can be corrected if I misquote, senior programs and programs affecting senior populations are presumed to be eligible for HUD CDBG grants. That's what I expected to speak on tonight. But now I find that we have, we as an organization, we as a city, have a larger problem in that we may not get any HUD funds at all this year. There seems to be a real risk. If last year was an indicator, even if we hit all of our targets this year, there can be a significant time delay to the end user, and my organization is an end user. So I am encouraging council and the administration to come together. The date I heard in that caucus was August 15th. If this is not in place before August 15th, if council and the mayor cannot compromise for the sake of the citizens, and in particular, for the sake of the seniors, then we will have to curtail programs, explore alternative sources of funding, which we do anyway, but it just makes our lives that much more difficult. So I'm encouraging, I'm pleading with council and the administration to come up with a plan. If I had hair, I would say my hair is on fire as a result of listening to that conversation. I don't have any, but you get, you got the idea. I now have a sense of urgency concerning the larger problem. And let me just close by saying that the scenario in Washington DC is now such, and we ought to all know this, that HUD itself is in serious danger. All right? So what I heard today indicates to me that we don't have to worry about a national administration canning the HUD program. It seems that we as a community and we as end users, the city of Harrisburg and any other municipality, are quite capable of terminating our own source of funding relative to HUD. I hope we don't do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Franchon, maybe you can give him, spread some light on that, because I don't want the public to think that we're not doing our job as city council members are. The administration is not doing their job as the administration to address this problem. It is, is well beyond out of our hands. So just let, just give the public an idea of what happened.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity, council. Mr. Ford has valid concerns because of the, what we are accustomed to as far as timelines. However, based on the submissions of reports last year, we had specific modifications and edits that we had to do before we could even apply for this year's funding. Therefore, we could not make decisions on any expected entitlement funds until those reports were completed and modified as such. HUD has just received those modifications and the deadlines that we are speaking of. We have an August 15th deadline to get all action plans in for 2019, which we're set to do. But we had some modifications that we had to do before we could even do, move further with 2019 funding.
Okay. And certainly, Mr. Ford, you know, I sympathize with you and certainly wanted to make sure that the seniors in this city receive all the funding that they can get, but we continuously tell sub-receipients that, please, we want to see a point where you're self-sufficient and you don't rely on those monies in case things like this happen. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand what happened with the funding this year and last year.
I would like the public to also know that they can expect, we have to meet our 30-day public notice and comment period, so they can expect those notifications to go out in July.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the middle, please? That would like to come to the mic, to my left? I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. My name is Blake Lynch with the Harrisburg Police Department, Community Policing. Just wanted to give an update with regards to some things that I spoke to individual members about from what we're doing for community policing in partnership with Parks and Recreation and Enrichment as well. With Kevin as well as with Dave, we are working with the Recreation Department to try and assist with our park rangers in patrols with this specific unit. We understand the difficulty in which the rangers have to cover throughout the city. Our officers as part of the CP unit are doing our best to assist in between details and other areas of the city to try and cover. As well as trying to create more positive engagement with residents and our children. They are visiting the parks when allowed and permitted to, from Morrison Park uptown as well, to try and really get out and continue to build positive community engagement relations. A step in which we're doing that this year is, as you may know, last year we had a few events that took place. We are partnering with Recreation to have movie nights throughout the city. So we are partnering with the Fire Department ourselves and Parks and Recreation, and we're selecting several areas around the city to have movie nights set up where we're going to be having movies, which Recreation owns those movies, and also partnering with neighborhood associations to try and again, build more positive community engagement with our officers as well as the Fire Department and Public Safety, to hopefully try and further the advancement of careers for our youngs, for our young children throughout the city, as well as continuing our community partnership with the Harrisburg School. Spoke with Dr. Knight Bernie earlier this week, and we are continuing to do that with regards to our National Night Out as well. We are coming uptown this year, and we are looking to have it at a Harrisburg School District-owned facility. More information will be coming soon with confirmation on that, but the date will be August 6th for National Night Out. We are partnering with neighborhood associations around the city who have decided on their own to partner with us and try to make it a much larger event. So we're excited for that. We're looking to make it bigger and better. In addition, we're also doubling down on hosting more community barbecues. So we're doing that as well. We were able, the Police Department able to purchase a new grill, so we'll be debuting that with more officers out, again, building positive relationships. So thank you for the opportunity. Kind of wanted to double down on what Dave and Kevin were discussing with trying to reach more of our youth throughout the city, and we're doing that at the Police Department under the direction of the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner as well.
Do you have a list of the movie nights?
Yes, we do. We're just confirming the scheduled dates with our officers in the patrol unit, but I'm happy to email those to council, at least the locations that we decided on with Parks and Recreation, so you'll have those as well.
Okay, thank you. And also at the barbecues, when you have those out in the city as well?
Yes. July 12th will be the first one, and we're coming uptown, Fourth and Emerald. So we're very excited about that, and we'll be moving throughout the city and impacting more locations than we were last year. So that list will be made public probably next week, right before the 4th. We'll start pushing that out through Recreation's Facebook and social media channels, as well as the city newsletter. We'll submit that information, Channel 20, and also the Crime Watch portal as well.
Okay, wonderful. Any questions, council members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Now I'll move on to the left, anyone at the left like to come to the mic?
Good evening, city council. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to talk and express my views and my concerns. My name is Kimberly Price. I live at 2514 North Fifth Street in Harrisburg. I've lived there for 25 years. Ms. Wanda Williams, Honorable Wanda Williams, you've been trying to get me to come down here and talk for the last two years about all the issues that have been going on, and I've tried to ignore things, and I've tried to ignore them. I'm past ignoring everything. Let's start with the easiest thing. I live at 2514. I have a semi-detached, the house beside me, 2516.
Kim, can you kind of talk into the mic?
Sorry.
Tonight we have the air on, and what it's doing is just, it's an echo when we speak.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that the house attached to me, 2516, I believe they're renting rooms out to friends. The past couple of years, I've seen at least 20 or 30 people move in and out of this place. They make noise, 11, 12 o'clock. At one time, they had six dogs. I had to call the dog person to come find out what's going on. They got rid of most of the dogs. Now, the new issue is, the breezeway next to 2516, the people that are living there, it started out with car noise. Two sports cars that the horns are, I don't know if they're air horns, fog horns, boat horns, exceptionally loud. Two blocks from the house, they're beeping a horn. Summer of 2018, these people have lived there maybe less than two years. Summer of 2018, no one in the block could leave their windows open. It just wasn't working. Then it started 11 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning, didn't make a difference. I don't know why other people don't call the police. I, I call the police. These people also have had abandoned cars in the back, no tires, hoods missing. I've called the police. I have this, I believe, when you have trash cars in a neighborhood, I believe that brings in all kind of other elements, bring kids bursting windows, doing all kind of everything. Now lately, this past Monday, the house at, there's 2514, 2516, the breezeway, it doesn't go 2518, it goes 2522, is the very next house. If these people hate me, they think I'm crazy, I'm insane, why did they just buy the tax house on the other side of me? So now, I'm sandwiched between these folks, okay? And when you try to talk to some of them, they say, "No speaker in English. You work in America, you have jobs, drive a car, you have insurance, you're speaking English." So I stopped speaking to them, I started calling the police. Well, then the police stopped showing up. No one would come, okay? This past Thursday, last week, I took my dog out about 7:30 in the morning, I noticed that my dog was going where he usually doesn't go. Caught my attention. When I looked, there was human feces in my backyard. I'm upset, I'm angry, I don't know what to do. I come in the house, I call 911. Who do I speak to? I found some human feces in my backyard. Operator says to me, "Okay, well, I understand that you found some things thrown in your backyard." I'm upset, I'm irate. "No, I found human feces." She still doesn't understand. So then I use the expressive that she does understand, okay? Then she says, "Well, we'll have an, have officer come to you when they're available." Okay, that's, like I said, 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning. 1 o'clock in the afternoon, no one still showed. I call 911 back, and she says, "Okay, give me the address." She researches it, she says, "Oh, they called and left a message, and no one was there." There were two calls on my phone. One was from Stilton, PA, I believe that was an officer. There was another one that was private. No message, no message at all. I'm in the backyard, okay? The people that I was having problems with the car noise, I was told to go to Neighborhood Dispute. I go to Neighborhood Dispute on Pepper Street, I knock on the door, no one comes to the door. I knock, I knock, this is about a month ago, I knock, I knock, no one comes to the door. So I go to, inside the car, I have a card here that I, I got from the police. I go to the car, I call the number, and I say, "Are you open today?" They say, "Yes." And I say, "Well, I'm, I'm sitting outside, I'd like to talk to you on Pepper Street." "Oh, we're no longer there, we're on the 2100 block of Front Street." "Oh, okay, well, I'll be around in five minutes." "No, no, 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 we're busy today, we, we can't talk to you." Then why did you pick up the phone? Why did you pick up the telephone if you're unable to talk to me? So I said, "You know what? You're unable to help me. Thank you very much." It seems like I'm running into a brick wall everywhere. So after I called after 1:00, 5 minutes later, I did get a call, Officer Colby, she never identified herself, I had to ask her who she was. And I said, "Listen, I'm finding human feces in my backyard, and I, I believe I know where it's coming from." And I said, "I have health issues, I've had a heart attack and two bypass surgeries, I can't afford to get E. coli, staph, or any of that." "You're not gonna get sick, what are you talking about? I have a garden just like you do," is what she says to me. So I asked her, "Does she have anyone going to the bathroom in her garden?" So she then says, "Well, well, what I need you to do is fax me the proof." "You want me to fax you feces? I want you to fax me a copy of your video showing that what they're doing." "Ma'am, it, it's not showing on the video, of course they're not going to stand in front of the camera and do it." But my ace in the hole is, I have two neighbors that have Xfinity. My system only keeps it for so long. Xfinity has it forever, okay? So after I hang up with her, I'm still irate. I call legal aid. I'm ready to file some civil suit or something, because if I file a civil suit, then I can get proof of Xfinity's records across the street, behind me, everything. In the last three months, my son has had his catalytic converter stolen. Last October, we had our window broke out, I'm finding weird things in my yard, they like to play around my cars, we had a flat tire in June. I have all the dates here, but I, I don't want to read and talk. I have all the dates, I have all the information. If I can prove what I'm talking about, I can definitely show you that these people think that I'm a toy, and I'm not a toy to be played with. Okay, so the two cars I was having the problems with, the green Honda, the silver Accord, they moved out. As of last Monday, like I said, their parents bought the house beside me. I believe it was through tax sale. Now, I don't know when they received the deed, but last Monday, they started cleaning up the yard, okay? Now, if you come to my house and you look at my backyard, going across is a wooden fence, but over here is a chain link fence, okay? So at the end of the wooden fence, if they're behind a wooden fence, I can see someone's back there, but I'm not able to see what they're doing, okay? Now, the sons are still coming back, they're working on their cars, they're transmissioning, they're, they're doing their engines, they're revving their, their engines, they're doing their air horn, their boat horn. So one morning back in April, I have the dates here, one morning back in April, it was about 5:15 in the morning, I'm asleep, I wake up with a terrible start, my heart's pounding, whatever, such a loud noise outside. I'm so PO'd, within 10 minutes, I'm in the car and I'm at the police station, okay? So when you go in the police station, I don't know if the man was homeless or not, it was a gentleman sleeping inside the little corridor, you go and you pick up the phone. I said, "I'd like to file a, a police report against my neighbors because I, I can't get no sleep, they're making all kind of noise." An officer never comes down, officer's talking to me, "Well, ma'am, you need to calm, you need to calm down, please don't tell me what to do, I'm upset. You don't live, you're not going through what I'm going through." I think the Harrisburg Police, I believe the Harrisburg Police are training their officers like, "If I step on your toe..." Well, I've had somebody step on my toe too. I was slapped in the face. You know what, I was slapped in the face last week. That doesn't help me, not one bit. The officer telling me she had a garden too, that doesn't help me. The officer telling me, "Well, you know, I used to own, I used to be a homeowner in Harrisburg too, until you were able to move, okay? I, I don't have the resources to move right now, okay? So I'm at a point now where I'm going to have to dip into my 401K and buy a $500 security system that has sound to it. I'm going to have to put up seven cameras to be safe, to feel safe, because I don't feel safe."
Okay, Ms. Coles.
Coles?
You have Mr. Lynch here, and you also have our Chair of Public Safety, Ms. Green. And after the meeting, if you just want to wait a couple of minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask that you meet with both of them?
Okay.
And they could help you with your situation.
May I say just one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
When the people, I don't know if they, I don't know how that tax sale works or whatever, I'm presuming they received the deed, that was Monday. By Wednesday, they were at the bottom of my yard, they chopped up at least five feet by one feet worth of wildflowers that I planted. Why do they think they have the right to do that? And then the neighbor who's attached to me, there's a chain link fence, and then we put a wooden fence. We have a wooden fence out front, they have a wooden fence on the, on the front porch. I'm finding carpet, poles, all kind of stuff on my side. I don't think they respect the property line or, since they're not the owner, they wouldn't know probably what a property line is.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
They'll meet with you after, get your card. They'll meet with you after the meeting?
Oh, that's something about the police, if you ask them for cards, no one ever has cards. This is something to go to the refrigerator, if you say, "Oh, ma'am, according to this card..." No one ever has this card, never.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the legislative session minutes of June 11th, 2019, and also approval of the special legislation, legislative, legislative session minutes of June 18th. Is there any corrections or admissions or deletions? Here none? Minutes are approved as. Moving on to reports of committees, we have none. Ordinance or first reading, we have none. Ordinance for amendment, we have none. And ordinance or final passage, we have none this evening. Moving on to resolutions. Resolutions 43 of 2019, Resolution 44 of 2019, Resolution 45 of 2019, and also- and also Resolution 46 of 2019. I want a motion, please, to suspend the rules and go into session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Petrowski, please read Resolution 43, 2019. And at that time, Mr. Mattson, that is your committee.
Very good, thank you.
Resolution 43 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a preliminary final subdivision land development plan submitted by Scott Dunwoodie on behalf of Bethesda Mission to revise a previously approved land development plan to demolish the structure at 1438 Hur Street and develop a two-story building which will be attached to the building located at 1424 Hur Street.
Representing the Bethesda Mission, can you come to the front please? And Mr. Mattson is the Chair of Economic Development.
Hi. Before we start, could you read or just state your names for the record?
I'm David Mall, Principal of Mall and Associates Architects. Working for Bethesda Mission.
I'm Scott Dunwoodie, the Executive Director of Bethesda Mission.
I'm Betsy Davison, I'm with H. Edward Black and Associates.
Okay. Representing the Administration is Mr. Jeffrey Knight.
Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director with the City of Harrisburg, as well as Dr. Kristen Murray, the Deputy Planning Director with the City of Harrisburg. First off, I'd want to, on behalf of the Planning Bureau and the applicants, thank the City Council for making this accommodation to be able to hear the case and be able to vote on it before the council goes on hiatus. The application before you is actually a revision to a land development plan that had previously been approved in October 2017, I believe. Or at least had been approved by the Planning Commission in October 2017, addressing the proposal for the Bethesda Mission's Youth Center or Community Center up at 1424 and 1438 Hur Street. As part of that project, they had phased the development to focus first on the Kurtson Abbe Press Building at 1424 Hur Street, which at the time was vacant. Their Community Center was being hosted in the Shamrock Fire Station at 1438 Hur Street. And they are almost, I believe, almost done with the rehabilitation of the Kurtson Abbe Press Building. And so they've begun to turn their gaze to the other building and renovating that building. As they began to run the numbers, they, it occurred to them that it would not be financially viable for them to renovate the structure as is and add it to the Kurtson Abbe Press Building, so they began to look at other other options for the development to be able to provide the services, and particularly the expansion of the services and programs that they're providing to the community up there. And so they came to the Planning Bureau, and their initial proposal was to demolish the Shamrock Station and to build a more modern structure at that location. In consultation with the Planning Bureau and with the Fire Department, particularly Fire Chief Interline, as well as the National Fire Museum, the, there were conversations with the applicants to discuss the appropriateness of that kind of development proposal and alternatives for their original proposal. And I would really like to commend the applicants on the urgency and the accommodations they made to address the concerns of the Fire Department in creating a new design, particularly a new facade for the Hur Street portion of the property at 1438 Hur Street. The building will largely, will be a new construction, but it will largely reflect the existing appearance of the fire station and will use some of the same materials that are existing in the fire station. And they'll also be putting a plaza out in front of that to commemorate some aspects of that historic fire station, as well as the crews and the individuals that man that. And really, what they've done is go above and beyond I think what the Planning Bureau expected of them, particularly as a nonprofit organization, and have really set a new baseline by which the Planning Bureau will be judging future projects that come through our department, just given the effort that they've done. So we'd like to commend them on that. At the, at the June, sorry, at the May and June Planning Commission meetings, the Planning Commission reviewed and discussed the project, and at their June meeting, they voted to approve the request with four conditions, and one of the conditions has been met, that's consultation with the Fire Bureau. The second condition was the provision of refuse containers on site to address any garbage that may be created as part of programming or increased visitation to the property, in addressing the, evaluating and addressing lighting, exterior lighting particularly, so that light doesn't spill over into surrounding residential properties. And then, kind of a catch-all condition to ensure that the approval is granted by the Planning Commission and City Council in this permutation of the plan will not invalidate other previous requirements for, that were granted during the 2017 review, such as coordinating with PennDOT on an HOP permit. So the Planning Commission has voted to approve the project as it's been presented and revised, and the Planning Bureau is also in support of this project. So with that, I'll hand off the mic to the applicants to discuss any further aspects of the project they would like to discuss and answer any questions the City Council members may have.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. The land development plan that's before you looks in footprint very similar to the previous plan. We are still showing demolition of the firehouse with the new structure that Jeffrey mentioned. There are no changes to the parking lot. The site lighting is provided for that parking lot, but without spill over onto the residential lots. And no increase in purvis cover, so no additional stormwater management is required.
I think it's important to point out that the project's a better project, because we were asked to talk to the Bureau of Fire, and also we met with the Pennsylvania National Fire Museum. We're currently working with the Fire Museum to come up with commemorative marker on the corner. We're creating a pocket park at 15th and Hur. Three things we'd like to do with the project is to commemorate Shamrock Station Number 11, which is what this station used to be called before it became a youth center. We would also like to honor fallen firefighter Thomas Wenrick, who died in 1919 after fighting a fire on Hur Street, getting pneumonia and dying of tuberculosis. And also, we want to create a pocket park which gives the community something that is really theirs on that corner. I think, like I said before, the whole project is better because we were asked to go back to the drawing board and talk to, talk to people. So, thank you for opening this up tonight. Hope we've done the Fire Bureau and the firefighters an honor. And as you may know, Bethesda Mission, the youth center's been here for 30 years on that corner, and they've been serving the community well. And first phase finishes up probably next week, and we're anxious to move into the second phase, which would allow the center to expand their programs, not only for children and youth, but into senior programs and family center programs. Thank you.
Very good. For the record, is there anything that the general public should know, or particularly residents in that neighborhood about construction of the project, any conveniences or inconveniences, excuse me?
Well, I'll let the applicants cover their construction phasing and any of the aspects such as that. I would note that I believe as part of the CAT bus stop optimization study, they're proposing a new improved stop at that site. And the applicants are working with CAT and the City Engineers Office to actually expand the footprint of that bus stop, just due to the kind of changed conditions of the site. So, there will be an improved bus stop at that location on the west side of the intersection, going westbound. So, but I'll let, I'll let the applicants discuss the project phasing in a little more detail.
It's been probably three years. We bought the printing company in 2015. Since that time, for three years, we aggressively pursued trying to save this building. During that timeframe, we started to develop more specific costs. We've provided those specific costs. And we actually did a comparison between what the cost would be to renovate the existing fire station versus demolishing and building new. That differential is about $700,000. And we also, we would be losing 700 square feet of space. Those things were developed and really came to a head in fall of 2018 in a big way. And then we knew that we needed to look at different things, different options. We have 1,000 donors to this combined community center of things. We've raised 2.3 million so far. 1.6 to do Phase 1, 700,000 toward Phase 2. We need to raise another 700,000 to a million dollars to actually finish the entire project. We do believe in the next year, we will be able to accomplish that. We have searched and looked far and wide for all kinds of funding, private foundations, individuals, churches, churches and businesses. We have some others that we are pursuing, and we do believe in a year's timeframe, we'll be able to complete the financing. And by, just by the way, we're serving about 75 children, teens and families presently. We envision when this is fully completed, we'll be approaching 200 plus.
Great, thank you for that. Given we have a jam-packed night today, I'll move it up to questions. I'll start with my left, Councilwoman Green.
No, I don't have any questions. I got the chance to see you guys when we were, came before the Planning Commission the first time, so. Thank you for taking the time to meet with the Fire Bureau, and I'm glad you guys came to compromise.
Very good. President Williams?
I just want to say thank you for providing a safe haven for the children, even during the summer months, and for them to play and work, and for providing the services for them after school. My only concern is, I would ask that you maybe meet with the Department of Transportation to obtain a signage there for safe crossing for the kids, because I've been there in that area several times, and I noticed that the children have a problem crossing the street there because it's heavily trafficked. So I would ask that you maybe submit an application to Department of Transportation for the signs for the kids for crossing and children that play. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Allett?
Yeah, I'll echo Wannasen, as you guys played an important part in that neighborhood and the community and the service you provide. My thanks for kind of going through the process and making some accommodations to the project to preserve some of the historical nature of that building and what it means to the community, so so my thanks on that, but no additional questions from you.
Councilman Majors?
Guess, well, yeah, again, don't want to belabor the point, but thank you guys for working with everyone else. In terms of the project, I know it's do you plan on using any local labor or any, as you move forward through construction? Local companies to do the work once you?
I would say, you know, all the companies that I'm familiar with are all local companies, both within and without of the city.
Pyramid Construction is our construction manager, and all the projects they're involved with involve local construction companies.
All construction companies?
And subcontractors.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And is everything is out to bid currently, or are you still, where you are in the bid?
We are, we have, we're gonna be, as Dave said, we're gonna be finishing the K Press Building side. Gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, outdoor space, another week or two, that will be all completed. We have not gone out, in Phase 2, we've not gone out to bid at this point. We still have some fundraising to do. And then when that is getting closer and closer, then we will be going through the process of finalizing design and then going out to bid. And we envision that being within the next year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dan?
Just, do you know what the kind of traffic pattern implications will be for that area while construction is happening?
There is, there's been some talk about how to do Phase 1. Phase 2, Phase 1 has already been completed, but to do Phase 2, the fact is that folks who, the children and teens and those who come to our facility, they're finding their way there. It's not like a, perhaps a suburban facility with a large parking area. So it is, it is the traffic pattern along 15th and Hur, and you're absolutely correct. In fact, yesterday, as we were opening up the youth center, there were children who were waiting to go in, and they were right on that corner. So you are, you are correct that that, that is something we need to be very concerned about, and our staff are responsible for making sure that those children, when they do show up, are being brought inside to the building. But there's a lot of traffic at all hours of the day going along Hur Street. That happens to be the location we're at, but we, our staff are really responsible for that and take care of it.
And if I may, that was a discussion in the first round of the plan with PennDOT, as far as those driveway locations, and putting the access to the new parking lot as far west as we can, and closing some of the driveways closer to the 15th and Hur intersection to help reduce some of the congestion. I was thinking more like while the actual construction is happening, not the plan itself.
Well, we need, we need to go through that with the city as far as it is not an, it will not be an easy project to be able to do construction, because you have it right against 15th Street. We'll have to work with the city, and Pyramid has been giving some thought ads to how that actually is gonna take place. In fact, the parking area in Phase 1 is potentially going to be a staging site for a lot of the materials to be able to complete Phase 2.
Yeah, so that's something I would like you guys to think about as you're doing it, because that is a really busy area.
Yes, it is.
There are a lot of young people.
And you've allowed us to close it down, we have Community Day and whatever, 15th Street? But no, we're not intending to close 15th Street during the entire construction of Phase 2.
And that's it for me, thank you.
And I think as Mr. Majors just pointed out to us, as Councilmembers, he said that is a blind spot, which, you know, that did bring, you know, and it's heavily traveled from the, the traffic coming from the Commonwealth employees straight up to 1st Street, Hur Street.
Some of the same issues along 2nd Street that you've experienced the same way with trees and other kinds of things which block vision.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Very good. Well, with that, we will put it up for the, a vote?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to, I thank you, sir. Ma'am. Moving on to Resolution 44, 2019. Please read that into record, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 44 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allett, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2019 budget reallocation.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Allett, who is the Budget Chair.
On this particular resolution, Mayor Neal, who is speaking on behalf?
I am.
All right. Do you want to go ahead and introduce the the specific reallocation we're discussing?
Are you gonna read it into the record, or?
Oh, he read it.
He read it into record.
So, this is a straightforward budget reallocation. There's just one item on it for this evening. And it relates to the purchase of body cameras for the Police Department. You may recall in our long-term capital plan, we had originally planned to spread this out over multiple years, three years to be exact, and then finance that. So we budgeted for each of the next three years, I think, I don't remember the exact amount, something around $80,000 a year to pay for the body cams. The ICA supported, enthusiastically supported the plan, everything was good. So the money was, was sort of anticipated to come from fund balance to pay for these body cameras. We determined that we might as well save a little money on the financing and simply buy them outright. If we do that, rather than financing them over three years, it's gonna cost closer to $200,000 as a total, rather than an $80,000 a year allotment. No interest. And so the, the proposal tonight is to just transfer a little bit more money upfront so that we can, we can pay for the body cameras this year outright. That would mean, we wouldn't have to pay a payment next year or the year after. And then that would allow us a little bit more, more money to potentially use for other, other uses. So that's all that we're doing. We are saying, rather than finance over three years, let's just buy them outright upfront.
And did you estimate how much that actually saves us in the long run?
Tens of thousands of dollars. I don't have the exact amount. And it was all, it was all estimated originally, because now, now the bids are in. So we know that the total upfront cost is almost exactly $200,000, just under. So you can figure, you know, an interest rate over two more years, and it's gonna cost more to finance. We have the money in our fund balance. We've agreed that this is a good use of fund balance. So we might as well just buy them.
There's a technical change, which is from service, which was
There's a technical change, which is from service, which was the original software service in the budget unit, to capital expenditure. There are two different pieces of the budget. So in the 2019 budget, there was $150,000 in service, and that's part of this number for the technical change, because literally, they'd be unable to execute a contract or an expenditure if it, if it comes out of the wrong lineup.
So we're buying the cameras, and the software comes with it, so the idea was it's probably more, it's probably better characterized as equipment rather than service. So we're switching that characterization and adding the additional $50,000 for this year.
I'm going to defer to my colleague and Public Safety Chair, Ms. Green, if you have specific questions as well.
Not too many specific questions. Do we know when we would receive the body cameras?
Still planning to roll them out this year. This would be the final step to allow us to make the purchase, and we're going to save some time. If we'd had to do the financing, that would have taken a little extra time, so the police will have to get back to you with the specifics of the rollout, but we can now purchase them and get everything in place to roll them out a little bit later this year.
Okay. And so we're only saving an, an interest over the next couple of years? We didn't get any discount by paying upfront?
Well, when we came up with those numbers, that was before we did the, they were sort of placeholder numbers, but the budget as it came back is $200,000 all-in for the, for the cameras and everything we need to operate the cameras, and so that, that met our estimate, because we estimated closer to 250 over three years, and so all we're, all we're doing is saying just make an upfront payment rather than pay interest on it as well.
All right, and do we foresee any annual costs such as storage or maintenance or anything like that, or is that included?
No, this is all-in. My understanding is that after three years, we may have to upgrade the technology and do this again, so it's not, it was always seen as a cost that was going to sort of go in cycles as the technology changed, but comparing, we're comparing basically a three-year lease to a one-year upfront, so this only gets us through the next three years. We may decide we want to keep it for a fourth year, or we may decide we want to do it again and get later newer, better technology in year four.
That's all the questions I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
None for me, thanks.
I don't have any as well.
Wes?
Well, the questions I had, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Green asked most of them in terms of, so you don't anticipate any, so there's not going to be any maintenance fees, any storage fees for any of this, this is just?
It's all-inclusive in the upfront purchase price. The only difference is that we originally conceived the financing it in three, but that, that total price includes everything regarding the body cameras.
Oh, okay.
There was a very, very detailed, long RFP development process, which, which had a lot, excuse me, participants in it.
Okay.
So.
All right. That's it for me right now, thank you.
No questions?
I know we proved this, how many body cams were we talking?
One for each patrol officer. I don't have that number off the top of my head. Maybe, a little, 100 even. Well, there you go. It's an easy number.
Thank you. All right, why don't we go ahead and move this to a vote, and I will defer back to, back to Council President.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Green, are you okay with this, since this is under Public Safety as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Resolution 45. Please read that into record.
Resolution 45 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Isaac S. Gaylord Esquire to serve as the Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's contractual matters.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Gaylord, how are you?
Good evening, I'm well, how are you?
I'm fine. Just give us a few minutes of, tell us counsel about yourself, what you've done, and where you expect in this position as a contractual attorney?
Thank you. So I started here with the city at the beginning of May, for the, approximately a year and a half before that, I served as an Assistant County Solicitor for Lancaster County. While I was with Lancaster, I had the opportunity to work on a broad variety of contractual matters. I worked very closely with their procurement and purchasing department on significant RFPs, bids, and all manner of public purchasing. Before that, I had the opportunity to work for a Court of Common Pleas Judge in Blair County, Pennsylvania, which is in the, roughly the center of the state. So over that entire time, I've been working pretty closely with local governments and on local government law. And before that, my academic background also focused on municipal law, particularly in law school. And going forward, I would assume and hope to continue working very closely with the procurement department, the procurement department here, and on any other matters as needed.
Okay. I don't have any questions for you, because I've read your resume, and also I've had an opportunity to see the work that you've done with the Bureau of Steelton and the City of Harrisburg's agreement, so moving on to my council members, Ms. Green?
I don't have too many questions. So you said you are no longer with the Lancaster County Solicitor's, Solicitor's, excuse me, Solicitor's Office?
That's correct.
Okay. And so your thesis was on blight restriction and tacker increment financing? Any ideas for the city, or what we can do about our blight, since, you know, you seem to have a little bit of specialization in that?
So.
I mean, we could talk afterwards.
Maybe afterwards, that was a little, on a broader level about how state legislatures were sort of putting the screws to cities that already had a lot of blight, and helping out rich suburbs instead.
And that screws in the technical legal sense.
The question is that you had asked that, and it was just on TV about Lancaster County last night with the blight.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mattson.
None for me, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And Mr. Allett?
Just real quickly, so tell me a little bit about the move from Lancaster here, what drove you to take on the opportunity here?
A few things. One, Harrisburg is closer to family for me, so it was a nice move, a little bit closer to home and relatives. Two, I was excited for a little bit of a change in the subject matter of what I was doing. In addition to working on procurement and other general government matters that I will also be working on here, while I was in Lancaster, I also worked on a variety of orphans court matters, so child abuse, guardianships for incapacitated elderly folks, and while that is extremely important legal work, I was excited to take on new areas of law that were closer to my speciality.
Very good. Well, thanks, and welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Majors.
No, no questions, but I do thank you for the work on, helping us put together the interim, the initial operational agreement with us and Steelton, and hopefully we'll be able to work together on a lot of other issues that we have before, before us here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels?
Just, if you could just indicate when you started working for the city, and what kind of items have you worked on for us so far?
So I started here on May 6th. I would say the largest project that I've worked on since I got here would be the interim operational agreement with the Borough of Steelton, as Councilmember Majors indicated. I've also had the opportunity to work on a wide variety of RFPs since I got here, probably five, five or six up to this point. I've also been working a lot with our open records officer on the right-to-know process. That's something that I have pretty significant experience with from my prior job, and I'm happy to continue working on that.
And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Gaylord, and welcome, and I hope to interact with you on several issues and matters that concern the city.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. And I will place this, we go back into session, on a legislative session for a vote. Moving on to Resolution 46, 2019, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 46 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution to provide initial funding and security to initiate the approved interim operational agreement between the City of Harrisburg and the Borough of Steelton.
Now, I'll turn this over to Mr. Majors, who is Chair of Public Works. Mr. Majors?
Thank you, President Williams, and I guess it will be the mayor, the solicitor, that will be doing the initial.
We can do it together, I think Neal can probably, he drafted it, so.
All right. Don't you have to explain these, this agreement?
Certainly. So this, this is a follow-up to what you voted to approve last week, which is, which is the interim agreement for the formal intergovernmental agreement in the fall. There's been a variety of staff in the city have worked very carefully, and to provide some conservative estimates of what it would cost if the interim agreement, which technically can go all the way to December 31st, goes to December 31st, and this is to fund what's in that agreement initially, so it is there. The estimates that we got from Public Works, including Mr. Johnson, Mr. West, and Mr. Rarig, included with their experience in rolling out the revised trash program for the City of Harrisburg for both recycling and solid waste. So we have a total of $470,000, that's an estimate for what it would cost to, if the contract went to the end of the year without the interim agreement, to get trash cans, do all the things that were required to do, to pay for the rollout, which last time we used a contractor to help deliver them, to do the recycling program, which also has a separate disposal fee that we have to pay to Penn Ways, plus the disposal fee we paid to Lac Swama for the solid waste. So it's anticipating all of those in estimates. They had reached out and met with Lac Swama in some detail and got an estimate of what the average Steelton drop-off is, and this is, this reflects that for what it is on a monthly basis. There has also been negotiated, essentially that, that a restricted account would be set up, it, money literally wouldn't move from the city, it would move from availability for other things, of $100,000 to secure it, if the city was not going to be able to perform the contract. So that would be available to Steelton to make up the difference of what they would have to spend to provide the service versus what's in the initial agreement for the rates for the citizens of Steelton on this. So that was a fairly, that provided them the confidence they needed, because their bid process would have required a security bond from a contractor. This is an alternative to that, so that we have a security. We may still need a bond come September, when we go to a full-blown agreement. Or another version of this may be there, and that's part of what will be negotiated over that period of time. The contract's effective July 1st, so there does need to be some funding commitment. Our office advised that it should come out of a general fund and then re-reimburse some Steelton's revenues that come in for the collection of it. It shouldn't come out of the Neighborhood Services Fund, because that's already dedicated to, for the services provided.
And it may go without saying, but just for the public's benefit, since we will not be sending out a bill to Steelton residents until the first week of July, and it's a quarterly bill, we won't have revenue coming in immediately to pay for the tipping or the recycling charges. We did have a very good meeting with Lac Swama over this, they're excited for us and don't see any issues, so this is just a, basically a pre-funding, which will then get reimbursed back.
Reimbursed, right.
And the, the security, the $100,000 security is simply a notation in the city's ledger sheet, it's nothing, you know, more than that. It's basically saying that we're going to restrict $100,000 of our fund balance to potentially cover some sort of catastrophic event, but then it can be removed once we either enter the general agreement and get a performance bond, or however we, we choose to proceed.
Okay. I will open it up to questions. I will start to my right with Ms. Daniels, do you have any questions?
I do, but I don't know how to articulate them.
Okay, you need to come back?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Allett?
So in terms of setting the funds aside, and you said quarterly payments, so if we're looking at between now and December, how much do we expect to kind of recoup as part of what we set aside? Is it all of it? Is it, because I'm just thinking, as we close out year-end, what that looks like?
No, not quite all of it, because the upfront cost of the toters is something which is going to take more than just half a year to recoup. But remember, we, we're not going to be purchasing those toters until we have the final agreement ratified by you. But we're setting, we're putting out, we're sort of pre-funding the money, so that that's taken care of. There are about 20, 200, 2300 accounts total, paying $75 a quarter, $300 a year, so if you do that math in your head, you can see that we will recoup that over time, but not within the first, first six months.
So just thinking about how, as we get to year-end, are we going to kind of put together, I guess, somewhat of an encumbrance and say, okay, this is the money kind of on the line to cover this as we go into like a subsequent budget year?
Well, that's what we're doing now.
Right, but so as we close out the books, we're going to, how are we going to, I guess, count for it then?
So this will be a phrase of enterprise, under, under the budget, this is how it will show up for when it comes in for the 2020 budget, and there'll be a better experience at that point, to have good faith numbers for what the year is, disposal charges, but there'll still be a transition period where they have a pretty high collection rate in Steelton, but there's just going to be a rational transition period.
Right, well, if they're a quarter behind, I would think that we're always be at least a quarter behind a.
Right.
Behind on revenue.
Right. It's not supposed to be behind, it's supposed to be.
It's supposed to be.
It's supposed to be in advance. Right, right. So, but that, there's going to be an experiential period of this, so.
Right, yeah, through this interim period while we're, while we're doing that transfer from.
But this will absolutely be, be in the budget as both the revenue stream that you see coming in and how it's accounted for. They're still discussing on the audit side, what's the correct way, and I think often in, in government financing, what is the correct way is always a discussion, you know, what is the best way to account for these, so you don't double-count it, which is one of the concerns.
Yeah, there's Charlie Whedon on this, too.
Yeah, we've been in discussions with the Controller all the way through. I think that he'll be, and his office will be in discussions over the summer as we get to the interim agreement. I think Steelton has the same issues on their side, they're trying to work through it, because it's different from what they've done before.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Allett, I had some questions, there was the same questions I had, but I'm concerned, you have $160,000 for the containers, how many containers are we going to give each resident? Two?
One. That, that's a sort of worst-case number.
Okay, because they only have 2,500 residents, right?
I know, but the containers are fairly expensive, so.
But don't we get them at a discount rate, because we go through them?
We do, but we, we have both, they're getting both trash and recycling, so in that sense they're.
I, I see that you have, I know that they're getting the containers and recycling, but you also have 160 for the waste containers, then you have 150 for the recycling containers. Now, they have 200, they have 2,500 residents, and that's quite a bit of money, 275,000.
So imagine $50 for a container, that's, what is that, 125,000? So, but I think that's not, $50 isn't the exact number for the container. That's how you, it adds up. That is also worst-case scenario, if we can, obviously if we can get a better deal on the container, we haven't procured the containers yet, then we'll only spend as much as we need to.
Now, are we still looking at four sizes for them? Are we buying four different sizes?
So we have the three standard sizes that we offered city residents, and that we already have experience ordering from the vendor.
Right.
There was a request by some, and Steel, we don't know how many, to have a fourth size, but I think that would be sort of a special request, and I don't think we'd be looking at very many of those.
Okay. And then you're paying 25,000 for the, the distribution of them?
Now, again, that would have to be worked out, that's just a sort of worst-case scenario.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
But if we take care of it.
I'm looking at this, and this is kind of costly, and I know we have a vendor that we go through, and I was wondering if we went through that.
So I think the allocation could be fair to say it's a good faith estimate and a sign to Steelton that it's, the city's committed to meet the full contract for the interim agreement through the end of the year, based on the information we have. The number of accounts, it's sort of been a moving target as we've been developing it with Steelton.
We left ourselves some wiggle room, you know, it may turn out to be slightly fewer than that in terms of containers, other costs, but this, I would say that's the worst-case number.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
All my questions were asked, thank you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, well, I guess I'll return, yeah, I'll return to Ms. Daniels, have you?
I think some of the questions were answered.
Okay. So I do remember during our conversation, when it comes to the trash cans or toters that I believe currently Republic allows, provides for them to have more than one container, are we still, are we factoring that into our estimates and our numbers, or is this just solely for one container per household?
Yeah.
Because I think they said they have smaller containers, so they could have two if necessary.
So their ordinance provides for 128, is it pounds?
Gallons, yeah.
gallons, whatever, some, some measure. And ours provides for a smaller amount, so that's an adjustment as we're going forward.
It is possible that some would have two, but it is more likely that you would have your, we're going to give everybody a choice of one to start with their best estimate of what they need, whether it's the large, the medium, or the small, and then afterwards they can put out trash in their existing container, as long as it doesn't exceed the Steelton regulations for the total of 128. When we do the official agreement, perhaps Steelton will adjust its ordinance, but that's still...
So, that's still a part of our...
Yeah, this summer we'll see how it's working.
Right, it's part of our discussions on trying to finalize an agreement. Okay. Hearing no other questions, I would move that we add Resolution 46 to the agenda for a vote. Thank you.
And not to digress, just one issue. I will note that the actual executed agreement is what the exhibit is here. So, both, so after both councils voted, the agreements have circulated, and you have the executed agreement. And I do want to commend Isaac, who, being very new to the job and thrown in with both feet, managed to work through this with everybody very quickly in a very pragmatic way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaylord. Okay, thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to Resolution 47, 2019.
Resolution 47.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have, well, hold on. Oh, yeah, we did, that's right, we did forget, we're going to put this on the whole. Okay, can I have a motion to go back in session?
It's moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Back in session now. Moving on to Resolution 47, 2019.
We withdrew 47. We'll consider submitting it next week. You weren't going to act on it tonight anyway. We'll have to determine whether or not we truly have the capacity to apply for this grant.
So, you want us to put it in committee, since we're, you want us to discuss it next week?
I think we should put it in committee.
I think it'd be premature because...
We should put it in committee at least, so we can discuss it on the second. But if you choose, if you wanted to withdraw, pardon me?
I was just going to say, I'm just noting that traditionally in the city, if the proponent of a resolution has the ability to withdraw it, that that's their right to do, and has been what's been done in the past, that's never been inconsistent with what we've done.
That's fine. All right.
So, Resolution 47.
Can I get a question of parliamentary procedure? The proponent meaning who?
When it comes down to you, there's a, there's a cover sheet, and it tells you what office it came from, whose resolution it is, so if it was a council resolution, if it's a Public Works resolution from Public Works, if it's the mayor's resolution, if it's the law bureau's resolution. So, this, I believe, says on the front that it's from the mayor and DBHD, I believe is what the cover tells you.
But once it becomes part of the agenda, it is upon council to remove it.
What, the history as I have known it and no, nothing else of it, is that when someone presents a resolution to council...
And once, that's why...
And has, and has the ability...
That's why we preview it before we put it on the agenda.
So, it is always the...
And confirm that it's supposed to be in there.
It is always the prerogative of the president of council to set the agenda.
Exactly.
The, what, the office that has proposed, the proposed legislation, historically has always had the option and has multiple times withdrawn it before it has come forward or moved forward after it was first introduced. That has simply been it, whereas an ordinance where you have already amended it is a little bit different, but something that has not been considered. But I'm just laying out what the history is as I understand it, as when matters come to council.
Okay, so it's the requesting department or bureau has the ability to withdraw it if it has not been considered yet? That's what you're saying?
That is always what's occurred. I don't think there's ever been a ruling or a request for a ruling in any direction on that.
So, you're not speaking from a ruling, you're just speaking from history.
I am, well, I will say that I am the, as you know, the parliamentary, parliamentarian as well in these meetings, and so I am not here to tell you what to do, I'm here to advise you as the parliamentarian of what, how the rules have worked and operated. And it has been here that if you propose it, you can withdraw.
Isn't this Resolution 47, isn't it time-sensitive?
So...
My understanding that is part of the group of documents that we need to submit to before the August 15th date.
I would leave that to the mayor and the director of DBHD to answer that. I am...
Can I, can I ask Ms. Speaks to come forward, please, to give us some confirmation on that? Or the mayor?
I can speak to that.
Okay, well, speak on...
We have to determine internally whether or not we have the capacity to make this application. We will have that conversation over the course of the next week, and if we feel we can move ahead, we will send it down to you for your next session, and you can always suspend the rules and debate it then. I mean, it's not that much different. But at this point, I think it is in jeopardy, given the uncertainty with regard to leadership of building and housing, and therefore I think it would be wrong to leave it on the agenda without, without a clear certainty as to whether or not we're going to be able to do it.
Look, could I suggest that you just place it on the agenda for next week, and we get the legal opinion from the law bureau between now and next week?
My only concern, I agree with you, Ms. Daniels, but my only concern is just the grant application. It's not as, it's not as like we are approving 4.2 million dollars. We have not received the grant yet. We have to apply for the application.
So, we're not going to be applying for the grant in the next week, so that's not, in that sense, that's not time-sensitive.
Okay, then if it's not time-sensitive...
The question is, well, it is, a decision has to be made before you all go on recess.
Okay.
But... So, the city has an ordinance on the pre-authorization of grant applications. It's been more rigorously applied for significant applications like this that are multi-year and seven figures. Otherwise, the council often ratifies them.
I'd have a problem putting it on next week, Mr....
Right. I will note, as I did at caucus, I will note as I did earlier, council is most likely, because of the order of events with the federal government, going, you need to come back into session at some point in the summer to address where we are left with these four programs.
And I certainly don't have a problem doing that, Mr. Grover. I will put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, July 2nd, but please give us a legal opinion as requested.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Resolution 47 is withdrawn. Moving on to O Business?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, you got me, sort of messed up. Okay, moving on to Resolution 43, 2019. Councilmembers, any questions or comments?
We back in session?
Yeah, we're back in there.
We're back in session.
Resolution 43 of 2019, it's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan submitted by Scott Dunwoody on behalf of Bethesda Mission to revise previously approved land development plan to demolish a structure 1438 Hur Street to develop a two-story building which will be attached to the building located at 1424 Hur Street.
Okay, councilmembers, any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Alec?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 43 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 44.
Resolution 44 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Alec, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2019 budget reallocation.
So, any question or comments on Resolution 44? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Alec?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 44 passed.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 45.
Resolution 45 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Isaac S. Gaylord Esquire to serve as the Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's contractual matters.
Any question or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Alec?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 45 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 46.